Thank you for being with us tonight, September 21st, with the Oakland Unified School District, District 7. And I am Michael Coleman with the League of Women Voters of Oakland. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as a rise in ballot measures. This forum was presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. Oakland Unified School District School Board, District 7. There are two candidates running for this position, James Harris and Chris Jackson. We will give them two minutes each for an opening statement, and then one minute each for closing statements. And then I will give them probably two minutes each to close at the very end.
Well, I figure in the opening, I should tell you why I'm here and why I'm running. And so I will take this opportunity to do that. And just want to share with you, I'm running because education is what matters to me most. Education, quite frankly, saved my life as a young man. I was a young man drawn to mayhem, drawn to, you know, what was cool at school. And it was a couple of teachers who said I was better than that, who convinced me that I was better than what I thought I wanted to be. And that's really what it comes down to, is I'm here to press upon this community and to press upon the school system that we have to create that opportunity for other young students to be lifted up by education. All the promise that comes with being an educator, with being involved in education. So that's why I'm running. It is really, it's been difficult, the last, you know, running and running for the first time and all of that, to really take hold of why and why you're signing up to do this. And I signed up to do this, you know, because I said, you know, I love education, but it's the city of East Oakland that I'm working for. It seems like a lot of times, East Oakland is last on the list, last on the list when it comes to the legal dumping, last on the list when it comes to priorities as it relates to education. And I can get up here and tell you a whole slew of things that we've been able to accomplish, but it really doesn't matter because we have so much more work to do. And I'm running to continue that work, to continue the good progress, but we've done such a bad job for so long that we have to, we have to remain ardent in our task to move forward. It's, it is our time in this city. If you were born here, if you grew up here, it's time for you to actually dig in and not leave, and to remain a part of this community, remain a part of the effort to make East Oakland first on the list, to make East Oakland schools and East Oakland children the priority, not the last on the list. That's what we have to do. Just across the street, we have Rise New Highland Elementary. Those students have to walk through garbage and trash more frequently than any other members of this school community. We owe it to them to partner up and join hands to actually begin to impact the way we do city love and the way we love our babies. That's what, that's why I'm running. I'm running to continue to ask you, to implore you to join the fight, to go to your local school, ask what you can do to help. I'm running to ask those teachers to continue to give of themselves, to continue to be passionate about education, even though sometimes they may not feel appreciated. I'm asking those students to take a chance and think about just more than what's in front of you and the future that you have ahead of you if you just invest in education. So those are some of the reasons that I'm running. I think we only had two minutes, and I think I'm right around that time, so I'll pass it over.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. And now, Chris Jackson.
Okay. And before I begin, I want to, you know, first state that today we had a shooting at one of our high schools. Young man was shot three times, and he's in a hospital. So before I start my comments, I want to pray for his family, and I pray for that young man, so that he can make a safe recovery, and that he can be blessed, return back to school, and that the other students that witnessed it can also not be scarred by that. So I'll just begin with that. I'm running because of students and kids like that young man who was shot. I believe that every single student, no matter what zip code they live in in Oakland, ought to have equal access to education and all of its resources. But we all know that that's not true, that not every zip code is equal in the education that they get. We got some schools that have reading and math coaches, interventionists, they have small class sizes, they have after-school programs, they have lunch programs and breakfast programs. And then we have schools, a lot of them are concentrated here in District 7, where the air conditioning doesn't work, where teachers have to pay for reams of paper and art supplies because there is no art programs in our schools, where those kids are tested and they're just judged based on a test score instead of the whole being of what they are. The fact is, 75% of black kids in Oakland aren't ready for the eighth grade, and we're in 2016. 86% of middle school kids are below reading and math standards, and we're in 2016. The fact is, we spent $200,000 on a PR staffer, but yet we cut after-school funding for kindergartners, and it's 2016. I'm running because I believe first and foremost, we need free universal preschool for every single three and four-year-old that lives in Oakland, California, no matter if you're rich or poor, because no family, no family should be too poor or too wealthy to give their kid a fresh head start in education. I believe we need to start also with vocational education, because not every kid goes immediately to college right after high school, only 19% of them go straight to college, but every kid, especially our young men in those streets right beside us right now, every kid should have a craft, a trade, a tool, so they can find good living wage, employment, and so they can live, continue to live here in Oakland. Lastly, I want to make sure that folks here and throughout our communities are engaged in our schools, and our schools engage our families and communities, because you don't have to have kids in Oakland Unified School Districts to be impacted by the decisions. When they close a school in our community, that impacts our neighborhood, it makes our neighborhood sometimes less safe. When our kids have to walk through garbage, that impacts our kids and it impacts their learning environment. So my name is Chris Jackson, and I would love to have your vote. I would love to have your support, and I'm running for District 7 School Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now we will get to the questions. And I will let Mr. Harris start with the first question. What strengths do you bring to the school board? Can you describe your community involvement and how it has prepared you to serve on the school board?
Well, I think my biggest asset is, I've actually truly agreed with many of the things that Mr. Jackson just said. My biggest asset is that I, you know, before I took this job, I thought I was able to bring people together. When I got this job and actually started doing the work, I realized that I have an incredible gift of bringing people of all types of backgrounds, whether that be black people, Latino people, white people, rich people, poor people. I feel like we're people, and I feel like that is one of the greatest assets that I bring to the table, and one of the most necessary assets in this climate. You know, when we're talking, you'll hear key words like gentrification, you'll hear key words like pushout, like racism. The answer is not saying, "You're right, I'm wrong," us against them. The answer lies in the conversation. I am someone who brings people together and doesn't accept that we can't get along, that we can't work together. The very progress of this city is based on how we interact, how we work together, and from an educational standpoint, how we show our students how to get through conflict. So those are some things out of there.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Now, Mr. Jackson.
So my strength starts with my mom's story, how she came here to Oakland. My mom came here as a 17-year-old from Pine Bluff, Arkansas. She came here, finished her education, and was able to find a good job at the phone company. She worked there for 32 years, gave her service to this city for 32 years. And I always say that that is a story that should be repeated time and time and time again. There was a time when Oakland was welcoming to folk that came here to Oakland, and that drives me. When I served on the community college board, I chaired our budget, $253 million. I ensured in tough budgetary times that we protected our career in adult education programs, that we protected our classrooms from budget cuts, that we protected our community-based campuses from cuts as well, too. I worked hard to preserve the mission of our community colleges, and that's my strength, is my experience in making sure that our communities in tough and good times can thrive here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will let Mr. Jackson start with the next question, just so we can go back and forth a little. Several aspects of education funding are not controlled by the school board or district administrators: strengthening oversight and charter schools, restoration of adult education, public funding for universal early childhood education. What should the note of OUSD be in looking for these goals?
So I want to start with the fact is that the board does have primacy and does have control over its own budget. And the fact is, our board hasn't done its job in terms of oversight, and hasn't done its job in making sure that it drives education policy and education decisions. Too many decisions have been left up to folks who are unaccountable to our communities. The fact is, Oakland had a wonderful adult education program that was funded up until a few years ago to over $14 million. Now it's down to $1.6 million. And we're wondering why our folks can't find good jobs, because we cut adult education, including our GED program. We spent $80 million in terms of contracted out services, but yet we underfunded our classrooms by $35 million. That was based on a budget analysis. We overfunded our administration by $17 million. These are things that are impacting our kids in our classes, and so I reject the premise that these are forces that are out of our control. We have total control over our budget as school board members. What we lack is the political will to mandate that these budget choices actually go to our classrooms and go to our students. Thank you.
Can you give me the question, the question piece? It wasn't clear.
It was a long one.
Yeah, just the question.
Let's see. What should the role of Oakland Unified School District be in looking for these goals? The goals are strengthening oversight of charter schools, restoration of adult education, public funding for universal early childhood education.
Okay, and I do want to speak to public education. And so that was not a cut, the trend of budget, so we don't get that money. The state began to direct those funds to the Beralta's, and it's miniscule. So we're talking about $1.5 million, and we made a big fuss about it at the time, and that was down from $3 million a year prior. We are defunding education. It is not simply a matter of adult education, it's education in general. California ranked 36th, we're the richest nation, we are a many-nation, richest state in the Union, and we fund our students at $7,000 a student. It's not enough money. And so I think, and just for those of you that are watching, to speak to the piece about charter school oversight, it would be oof you to take a look at either the ACOU or the Alameda County Grand Jury Report. And we actually, just a few weeks ago, I think it was last week, agreed with many of the findings. We have to make sure, two things. Charter schools are serving special education students at the same rate as traditional public schools, and charter schools are serving African-American students at the same rate, if not more so, than at the traditional public schools. And we are working to do those things right now. Fasada. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question, and we'll let Mr. Harris start with this one. In Oakland, some schools are generally reviewed, pardon me, generally viewed as good or very good, and others are failing. We all want a good school for every child. What is the best way to improve underperforming schools and assure every family that their child's school will meet his or her needs?
Absolutely. So it's a two-part answer, and the first part is instructional leadership, creating a strong and positive culture where students can actually go to school and be in a position of vulnerability. When you are in a position of vulnerability, you're in a position to learn and accept new information. When you go to school and you're guarded and you're tight and you're tense, you cannot accept new information, and you know that as adults. And so we have to create more of those spaces. We have, after years of work, begun to create those spaces at Rise New Highland. So much more work to do to actually get test scores up, but what I found in my early work is that much of the culture that we need in schools, especially in our schools here in East Oakland, does not exist. And then the last thing I'll say is maybe a personal thing. We have to begin to value where we live. This is for those of us that live in East Oakland. It is not better in North Oakland. It is not better in West Oakland. We have a good thing going on here, and if, and that's the coming together that I'm calling on you for, we have to begin to pick up trash and love our, and offer safe passages to our students and value community and respect. So I'm sorry, I'll stop.
Thank you.
And so I want to go back to our narrative about words and actions. The fact is, we've heard a lot from our board around the principles of supporting our kids and the principles of supporting our educators and the principles of supporting our community. The fact is, our budget has grown from $428 million to $792 million over the last four years. So let's be clear, the money is there. What's not there is a political will. The fact is, we can't have kids who feel open to express themselves when Oakland Unified School District continues to invest. We have more police officers in Oakland Unified School District than we do school counselors, social workers, and nurses combined. No kid will feel safe if we don't have enough counselors and social workers and nurses to reach out and address their needs. I also want to, you know, make sure we clear up some more misnomers, because the fact is, we've cut student support services, we've cut English as a second language services, we've cut, we don't have tutors, and we don't have math and reading interventionists. We need to be able to fund these services. And you can talk a lot about your values, but I want to see the budget, and that tells you what your values are. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll let you, Mr. Jackson, start with the next question. The NAACP, Journey for Justice, and others have called for a moratorium on charter schools. Would you support legislation in California that did the same? Would you entertain, I guess, a moratorium as a, I'm having, oh, this would be for you as a board incumbent, but as a board member, would you entertain that?
Well, the fact is that our board has not shown, you know, has not shown any leadership in trying to rein in our mostly unregulated charter schools. The fact is, they're not required to give us annual financial reports on public money that's being spent. They suspend and expel African-American children at a rate that's three times more than our district schools. They're not accountable to any policies that we actually have. And the fact is, my opponent's been here for four years, and no policy has gone into place to rein in and regulate our charter schools. So my thoughts are, yes, I want to have a moratorium on charter schools until we can actually get a rein, get some oversight on the budget, so that we actually understand what they're spending their monies on. I want to make sure that we stop the exiting of African-American students right before the standardized tests. I want to make sure that these charter schools also aren't contributing to the prison pipeline, the school-to-prison pipeline that's happening right now. I'm gonna, give me a little bit of grace right now. When you expel a student, they're three, they're one in three chance of going back to Oakland Unified. Every student that drop out has a one in four chance of having contact with the criminal justice system. Right there is your Oakland Unified Charter School Prisoner Pipeline, and I want to stop it.
Okay, so.
Do you have a minute in the house?
That's okay, I'll take a minute. It's, so when you call for a moratorium, I don't think it's about a moratorium. I think it's about accountability. And again, it's important that you understand your rights as citizens, my job as a school board member. We do have fiscal oversight. We do have oversight over schools. We, they are required. Every five years, a charter school comes up for renewal, and all of these things become a question, become an issue. We need to do, and that's why I wanted you to look at the ACOU report, as well as the Alameda Grand Jury Report, which calls into question many of these things. This lets us not fall into the place of, this is about us against them. 12,000 families in this city are served by charter schools. 25,000 families in this district are served by traditional public schools. It cannot be us in a house of God saying, "You're wrong and you're right." It can't be us in the city that we're trying to build saying, "You're wrong and I'm right." That is not the way. People have the opportunity to make choices. It's our job to make sure that people are accountable. And again, I want to stress, we did ask the new charters that were approved, and there's been five new charters in the last decade. Five new charters in the last decade. The last three that came before us signed a pledge that said, "We will serve African-American students at the same rate. We will serve special education students at the same rate." So we can, with either political will or the will of the people, say, "You're accountable to this city, not to a business, not to an opportunity to serve only those you want to serve." So we can have that conversation in a respectful way.
Thank you very much. And now the next question, we'll let you start, Mr. Harris. What are your plans to address bullying and sexual harassment?
And so, and this relates more so to the community around the school than it does inside the school. And I can say that a majority, a large majority of the schools inside the site are safe. Harassment, prostitution, trash, garbage, all exists around the school. So my plan is to partner with the city and to badger the city in my free time to say, "We can do better. We can do better outside the school." Safe passage is the way you remove trauma from a child's daily experience on the way to school into school. Once you get into that school, you will read every policy that's anti-bullying, anti-harassment, it is not tolerated in the district, and every member of this school board believes that strongly. And so we'll continue to enforce those policies and continue to work with the superintendent to make sure that those kinds of things are happening, especially in the schools that are often overlooked, because sometimes community isn't as strong as present, but we have to make sure that they have the resources to make that anti-bullying piece work.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson.
And once again, I want to say, we've had four years to set that up, a relationship with the city, a relationship with the community, and that relationship just hasn't been built. So we need to, we need something new. We need a real change. The fact is, we need to invest in our more restorative justice staffing. We need to invest in our counselors. We need to invest in our nurses. Some of our kids have behavioral health issues, that they need staff and folk to sit down and work with them. Some of our kids have actual medical issues that they actually need a medical personnel with. Right now, we're not investing in our schools to be able to address the bullying and sexual harassment. You can't continue to give money to our central district administration and to outside private consultants and then say, "Well, it's up to the community to do this work." No, I'm gonna put this on our district. If we want to solve it, we need to invest in solutions and staff that can bring about those solutions. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Jackson, you get to start this next one. What conditions are the school libraries in District 7, and what can or will you do to improve them?
Well, first, as a community college board trustee, I chaired our budget committee. And, you know, I know how to allocate a budget that meets our students' needs, and a library is one of them. The fact is that our libraries are not all built equally. There are some amazing libraries, and then there are some not-so-amazing libraries. There are schools in District 7 that don't even have the staffing to fully staff a library, and there are entire schools that actually have two designated librarians, not in our district. And so the fact is, we actually need to prioritize District 7 in our budgets. We've had our District 7 school board, they would be president of the school board for the last two years, and yet our needs, our district, our schools, are never prioritized on issues like having adequate staff and for a library. And so I want to change that. I want to make sure that we have all the tools necessary and all the resources necessary in our schools, so that we can have adequate staffing and adequate books in the library. Thank you.
So I can say shamelessly, I disagree with that, and proudly, I do my best to manhandle the budget in favor of East Oakland, so I'm a little bit biased. And we've spent, we have never in the history of this district spent the money that we've spent. So I'll tell you about two libraries that are my favorite. One is at Esperanza, and they're doing a million-word challenge this year where the students are reading. Grass Valley Elementary, if you ever have a chance to go by there, beautiful libraries. We need more. And if you ever remember Measure G, it came, it was passed almost a decade ago, and it was designated to expand libraries, because at the time, we were still not spending on libraries the way we should. And so the opportunity for every student to have access to a book, every student to have access to reading time, to personal reading time, and even being able to check out a book and take it home, has to be there. And so we are increasing the expenditure, but it's now come to the principle to make a decision on whether or not they have a library or a particular staff member. So I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you very much. We've, just so you know, we've got several more questions, but we're running out of time. So we're gonna have one more question, and then we're gonna have closing statements. So, Mr. Harris, you get to start the next question. As the need for a more specialized, technically-trained workforce increase, how would you accept support from future employers without privatizing our schools?
And it's very important to not privatize schools. Private money is here today and gone tomorrow. And it's important, you know, in answering this question, you think about, and you remember the power of the system. Every year, we spend almost a billion dollars in education, but you can set up respectful partnerships that allow students opportunities to engage in real-time business practice. And again, I offer you the opportunity to visit Castlemont High School or Madison Park High School. And even as low as the sixth grade, Madison Park is dedicated to business and entrepreneurial ship of skills. And so what they've done is partnered with the business sector to come in and begin to train, they took, come in and begin to train some of those students to begin to think about what it means to be an entrepreneur at Castlemont, Sustainable Urban Design Program. So engineers come in and teach them how to build water systems, and then they introduce them to a job opportunity. At many schools, students study from nine to one, and then they go and scrub in and are able to shadow doctors and nurses. This is all the result and the extension of the work we did with Measure In, which voters passed another $120 million. So it can be done.
Thank you.
And in terms of opportunities, the fact is, I want to make, I, one of the central points of my platform is stronger vocational education. Once again, we've had four years to build this, but we know, when we look in our schools and we look at our kids on the street, we know that the words that are coming from our district does not match the reality that we see. The fact is, we need stronger vocational education, where we start in middle school, and we work with organizations like Cypress Medela, which is right on 66th Avenue, and we work with other companies, so that we can make sure that our kids have the skills needed to go into these workforces. The fact is, this work is not being done. They passed Measure In over two years ago, and we still not seen any progress. We've not seen any impact with those dollars. I'm a social worker, and I work in workforce development with our formerly incarcerated. I can tell you, scores of kids in the last two years from Oakland schools have basically graduated with no pathway. It's either college or bust, and we need a, we need multiple pathways for our students' success.
Thank you very much. And now we will have closing statements, and we'll go in the reverse order that we started in. So, Mr. Jackson, you get to start closing statements.
How about?
Two minutes.
One minute?
One minute.
One minute.
Oh, come on, Ms. Wall. Sorry.
Is it one or two?
One.
One minute, okay.
Okay, so once again, you know, thank you for having me. My name is Chris Jackson and I'm running to be your representative on the school board here in District Seven. You know, being born and educated here in Oakland, it means a lot to me. My wife works at a high school. My daughter goes to kindergarten. She just is in her first month now. And so I'm heavily invested in our public schools. When given a choice to invest in our public schools, I chose to invest in our public schools and when I go all in, trust me, I went all in on our schools. I want to make sure that every student can have a wonderful experience, that they all can have excellent libraries, access to teachers, counselors, reading coaches, math coaches. But we know that that's not true. No matter what words the district says that they're doing, when you go into a school, the reality is that that investment's not being made. But what you can see is a doubling of the six-figure salaried central administrators. You can see those numbers. So what I want to do is bring equity to District Seven and make sure that we share an educational resource that all other districts have. Thank you so much and I look forward to having your vote and trust this November eighth. Thank you.
So I will close with this. I told you at the beginning, I could get up here and tell you some great things that we've done and I'll take this opportunity to say, we have given our teachers their first raise in nearly a decade, sixteen percent, fourteen percent. We're hoping with this partial tax that it becomes sixteen percent. We have raised 120 million dollars, targeted investment, first time in the history of school districts, targeted at college and career readiness, and it is about career as well as college. We have reduced dropout rates that were at forty percent and they're at eighteen percent, twelve percent. But don't be fooled, we have not done enough. I stand here before you and four years ago, I said I'd never run for this office again. We have made progress. Now is not the time, I tell my wife this, for me to walk away from this work. We're making progress. I invite you to look at the work. We have not done enough. I'm here to keep fighting for you. I'm available to you if you need me. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you very much to both the candidates on behalf of the Legal Women Voters and the Block by Block Network and 100 Black Women. Thank you for being here tonight to listen to the candidates and for you to find out what's going on in the public.